Okay, Annette, do we have any comments from the public?
No comments.
Second, any discussions or questions in regards to the minute? Seeing none, I, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against? Okay. Did you get that, Annette?
Yes, we did.
Okay, thank you. Why don't we go right into resolutions?
Thank you, uh, thank you very much. Just as a reminder, if you could state your name when you make a motion or start discussion, we are using the speakers in the ceiling today for the YouTube recording, so just that helps with recordings and identifying who's saying what. So, uh, we will go ahead and get started. First resolution is resolution number twenty-two oh seven one four dash A. This is requesting the approval of the Clean Ohio Green Space Conservation Program Cost Agreement with the Ohio Public Works Commission and the District One, which is Cuyahoga County Natural Resources Assistance Council, EnRAC. The EnRAC approved the administrative cost agreement at their meeting on Thursday, June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Today presenting will be Allison Ball.
Hi. Hi, Allison.
Hi, Allison. For those that don't know me, I am Allison Ball, I'm a planner with the County Planning Commission, and I am also the district liaison for the Ohio Public Works Commission. And I'm realizing that I think the slides are flip-flopped, so, um, if I can just go through the whole slideshow.
Sure, yeah, so we actually have two resolutions that are in tandem, but they're separate contracts, so we'll go ahead.
Great, so, um, the Ohio Public Works Commission was initially created in nineteen eighty-seven for the infrastructure program. And the OPWC and its programs are established in law by the Ohio Advice Code, and you can find that in section one six four. So, OPWC's mission to de- is to deliver its statutory programs with the greatest efficiency and highest customer satisfaction while maintaining a high level of transparency and accountability to Ohio's taxpayers. So, um, Ohio Public Works, the commission has two major groups of projects, including infrastructure and the conservation. So, infrastructure includes a state capital improvement programs, and I'll go into more detail with them. Local transportation improvement program, a small government program, um, which is in still part of the infrastructure for communities and villages with less than five thousand in population, and a small amount of money for emergency fixes for infrastructure, and then they also have the Clean Ohio Conservation Green Space Program. OPWC, back in nineteen eighty-seven, divided the state into nineteen districts. Each district has in a public works integrating committee and a natural resources assistance council, and Cuyahoga County is District One. So, the, um, the programs, both programs are run through the Cuyahoga County Planning Commission. The infrastructure and Clean Ohio programs for round twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, the funding will be released started on July first of two thousand and twenty-two. The programs are advertised and run on our website, and then, uh, OPWC last year launched a new electronic program management portal called Workswise. And so, all the applicants are able to work through this, and then the scoring of the projects and even the disbursement of the funds for the awards go through this new, uh, Ohio Public Workswise program. So, the Ohio Public Works Commission Infrastructure Program, here are just some examples of recent programs or projects that are even being completed now. They include roads, bridges, culverts, water supply systems, wastewater systems, and stormwater collection systems. So, uh, it whoops, it was easier to say it during that. So, the actual state capital improvement program is a grant and loan program based on funding from general obligation bonds. The good thing about that, each allocation requires ten percent of the allocation to be a loan, and then when the loans are paid back, it comes back to District One and becomes part of the revolving loan program. So, the local transportation improvement program is a little bit different. This is only for roads and bridges and culverts, and the funds for that is provided from gasoline taxes. So, and again, I mentioned the Small Government Commission, the district will select the small government projects that go to the Small Government, uh, Commission, and then they have an, an extra opportunity for funding if they didn't get funded through the districts, and that's a statewide competition for the, um, villages and townships with populations less than five thousand. So, this is a map of the projects that were funded last year. We had seventeen projects receive funding, ten road projects, uh, one bridge and culvert, although there's two bridges in green. So, and, um, the rest were water or wastewater projects. And then for the, whoops, we'll have to get back to that, sorry.
So, what the presentation's flipped in the order of?
Yeah, so, the A, the, the, anyway, the other program, which will be the resolution B, is for the Clean Ohio Green Space Conservation Program. So, um, the Clean Ohio Green Space Conservation Program funds preservation projects, preservation of open space, sensitive ecological areas and stream corridors. This is a unique program in that it purchases land as well as preserves lands in perpetuity. So, and it's not for the purpose of active recreation, but more passive recreation. And here, whoops, here are the projects that were funded last year. We had seven projects funded, and, um, the six of them were open space and two were open space improvement projects, meaning that they had already been awarded funding to purchase the land, and they were able to add amenities, um, for public to visit those lands and, and, uh, access to those properties. And, uh, this is the, the, the way the system flows. OPWC, they oversee both the infrastructure and Clean Ohio program, and they approve all the methodologies that are used for at the district level to evaluate the grants, and they give final approval of the recommended projects, and they award the project funds, they are the bank. The DOPWIC is the District One Public Works Integrating Committee. They implement the infrastructure grant programs, they develop the project selection and evaluation methodology and select projects and send it to OPWC. They also appoint the Natural Resources Assistance Council, and one of the members sits on the Natural Resources Assistance Council, and the Natural Resources Assistance Council implements the Clean Ohio Conservation Program, develops the project selection and evaluation methodology, and selects projects recommended by OPWC for funding. Just so you know, for round twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, the total for infrastructure projects, including all the grants and loans, is, uh, twenty-nine point five million, and then for the open space and green space conservation program, we have three point three million dollars. So, the contracts that you have before you today are for administrative services agreement for the liaison, and the district liaison undertakes the work and activities set forth, um, in the scope of work defined in the agreements included in your agenda packets. Attend any OPWC-sponsored leadership events, provide the district and the OPWC with the transcription of minutes, meeting notices, agendas, and any other necessary support services. Travel within the district as requested by the district to assist local subdivisions and attend meetings. There's more, um, under the direction of the district. Initiate and develop project solution, selection processes for approval by the committees that will ensure that the recommended projects meet the requirement of law rules and regulations of OPWC, and under the direction of the district, notify and assist all political subdivisions within the district of the opportunity to apply for financial assistance and be considered for the Skip, LTIP, and Clean Ohio programs.
Thank you, Allison.
Alphabet soup there.
You done there, Allison?
Mm-hmm.
Any questions from any members of the committee?
No, I have to recuse myself on, uh, resolution two-two zero seven one four B. I am the chair of the DOPWIC. I will step out on that one.
I'm a member of DOPWIC also, so is that, I'm gonna look to the law department. Is there any issue with?
I think when we, we talked about, I'll let you, I think we talked about it before, if you're a member, if you've got decision-making authority, you must recuse yourself. If you're a member of something, but you guys vote still, don't you?
We vote on the, on the projects. So, Allison, which one's the Clean Ohio?
The, the first one, A.
Are you the chairman?
How many, how many do we have left?
It's one, two.
So, do we have enough?
So, we have three that have to recuse themselves.
Well, these A.
Okay.
These two are B.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought they were all A.
Nope, okay.
Does that make sense the way I explained it?
Okay, and we got another board?
Hello. Perfect timing. But I think we need a majority of the quorum.
Need a majority of the quorum.
So, if we are one down, we should still be okay.
Between the mayors.
Welcome.
So, there is?
Let the minutes reflect that Director Wong has joined us.
So, if there's no questions, question, Mayor?
No, I'm just gonna make a motion to, uh, approve, um, resolution A.
A, Mayor Brennan.
Second, Mayor DeCiccio. Any other further comments, questions on it? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And abstained. Okay. That motion carries, okay? And on the next most, uh, resolution, uh, companion resolution to that is twenty-two, sorry, twenty-two zero seven one four dash B. Is there a second? Mayor DeCiccio. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abstained, accused. And so, on that motion, passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Allison.
Okay, the next resolution before us is twenty-two zero seven one four dash C.
Yeah, so in front of you, you have a revised packet. There are some amendments made to this resolution, briefing memo and agreement, so you should have the redlined version in your packet for those. So, anything that is approved today will have to be a recommendation for approved as amended. Jim Sonhalter is here, is the planning manager designing implementation on our group, and has been, uh, leading the effort with Public Works on the Lakefront Public Access Plan.
Thank you, thank you, Mary, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Here we're requesting the approval of amendment, our second, uh, amendment contract modification to our interagency agreement with Department of Public Works, uh, to continue to provide professional planning services in support of the Lakefront Public Access Plan and evolving projects, uh, for up to seventy-five thousand dollars. And with that, we would also extend the term of the, uh, the agreement. It was through the first amendment, it was going to expire at the end of this year, we're looking to extend it through June thirtieth, uh, next year, two thousand and twenty-three. I'll bring you up to speed quickly on what we're doing here. You've seen a lot of these slides before, I think this is the fourth time I've talked about this project with you all. So, we've completed the Lakefront Public Access Plan itself, and through that, we've developed four focus areas, and right now, we have, uh, we are immediately pursuing funding and doing work on two of them. Uh, you'll see to the left, we have Lakewood's Gold Coast, and to the right, we've got the Euclid Beach Connector. So, we are, um, we've obtained, uh, quite a bit of funding, and we go to the next slide here. For the Euclid Beach Connector, you can see the project area that extends from the, uh, Euclid Beach Cleveland Metro Parks Lakefront Reservation. That squiggly line you see to the, to the right, the east, that's the new, relatively new pier, that's part of the metro parks. And you'll see that where in the project area goes all the way over to Shore Acres Drive, right to where it terminates, uh, just before it hits Lakeshore Boulevard. So, we've got three discrete areas and stakeholder groups we're working with, Metro Parks, the Eastern Third, um, Regional Sewer District, and Buella Park Neighbors in the middle, and the Shore Acres Club, and the Villa Beach Club, uh, Homeowners Association to the west. So, you can see how funding has been, uh, divided and awarded among these areas. Counties all in, in most of it. We are awaiting the award announcement for our FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program dollars. That's the two point five, four million dollar grant that's been two weeks out every time I talk to you. But they tell us by the end of July that those funds are going to be awarded. We're also awaiting the, uh, we have an award notice, uh, for Nature Works, that's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We have the million dollar erosion, emergency assistant grant, E E A G, in the middle section. So, that's for everything from preliminary engineering, final design and engineering through construction. And we're also awaiting, uh, word for, uh, the Land and Water Conservation Fund. ORLOP is outdoor recreation legacy program, and that's for up to one point seven million dollars. That would be, um, expended mostly, well, here it shows in the metro park section, but we're gonna look to extend that, uh, to, um, encompass the middle section as well. And we've got some other funds we're pursuing, but this is what we have in front of us right now for Euclid Beach. And the next slide, please. And for Lakewood Gold Coast, uh, we're going to be putting a substantial amount of the FEMA dollars toward this, about nine hundred thousand dollars, to get us through everything you see there, uh, data collection, a lot of the upland survey work has been done, uh, bathymetry, topography, uh, you name it. Preliminary engineering, benefit cost analysis, and design, uh, like thirty percent design drugs, so we can apply for further funding. So, uh, that's a major commitment, and above that, a little out of order, sorry. I go with the big numbers first, so. Coastal Management's, uh, Assistance Grant, um, we've just been awarded that. Uh, we have, um, signed it on our end, it's back to, uh, the Office of Coastal Management through O D N R. That's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for planning and preliminary engineering. So, we're well into this, so, um, with this, um, resolution, um, we're just, county planning is going to be in this for quite a bit more time and, uh, more commitment. So, it's going to be about half of my time over the next couple of quarters and winding down as things go from planning to engineering and construction. Happy to take any questions.
Okay, thanks, Jim, appreciate it. As Public Works, the Public Works Department, it's been really a great relationship, and I brought this up to committee before, that this is a great relationship to have county planning, leading the effort on this planning. As we go towards an implementation and potential construction, obviously, we'll be working very closely with county council. And as, the, the great thing about county planning is they've been able to chase the, the grant dollars that are out there, and as we all know, there's plenty, well, there's a lot of money out there, and you've gotta really skillfully put together the application process to be able to go after those dollars, and we've been fairly successful, and we hope to be more so in the future, so. So, with that being said, we have a resolution before us for twenty-two dash zero seven one four dash C, um, to amend their contract and for an additional seventy-five thousand dollars.
Second, Joe Nani.
Okay, any other further comments, questions from anybody? If not, on the motion, all those approved, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, that motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Okay, we'll go to the next.
Yes, uh, next on our agenda is an update on the Garfield Heights Master Plan. Rachel Novak, one of our senior planners here, is going to present on that. We thought, you know, some of our projects are coming close to finishing up, and it's always good for you to have the inside, uh, view of things before things go publicly public as a completion of plan. So, with that, I will turn it over to Rachel.
Perfect, all right.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, so, my name is Rachel Novak, I know I've only presented in front of the board a handful of times, so I just kinda reintroduce myself. Rachel Novak, Senior Planner here with County Planning. Excited to share, um, all things about the Garfield Heights Master Plan. So, hopefully some folks, this might look very familiar, this is very traditional process for us here about, uh, with our master plans. So, the process typically is about five steps here, so our first one here, current conditions, that's where we really start to understand the community. So, we already have undertaken all of those play, um, these phases that are in the teal. So, current conditions, we've looked at everything from demographics, housing, business trends. Um, one interesting piece that, uh, we really looked at was kind of this post-pandemic, you know, what does the world look like? What's trending, how can we help Garfield Heights kind of build upon that, um, and move forward as we start to kind of rebuild after the pandemic? So, then from there, we hop into community vision, so this is where we start to establish how the community wants to grow and develop in the next decade or so. So, typically, the master plan will have a lifespan of about ten years, then you wanna reevaluate it and make updates as needed. Now, um, once we get past the community vision, we hop into goals and actions, so this is where we start outlining those specific policies, recommendations to help achieve that future, um, that was outlined in the community vision. So, right now, you can see in the dark blue, we're really kind of into this implementation and really starting to assemble the full master plan. So, this has been about eighteen months, going on about two years in the making, so we're pretty, we're getting pretty close to the end here. We're about to enter into our third and final community engagement, which we just opened up our survey, and we'll have an open house towards the end of the month, um, to ask folks to help us prioritize all the various recommendations that were established in goals and actions. So, implementation, this is where we outline, you know, partners, priorities, responsibilities, um, who can help Garfield Heights get projects moving, get things on the ground. And then the draft master plan's really the final phase, where if you think about each of those as a chapter, we assemble them into a comprehensive document. So, as I mentioned before, uh, we have had a lot of really great community feedback throughout this master plan process. So, in total, we've had two overall community engagement periods that have been conducted, each of them, uh, because of COVID and kind of the ever-evolving changes that that, uh, comes with. We decided to take community engagement through a slightly different approach. Through a traditional approach, we might, you know, extend, uh, an online survey, have it open for about two weeks. We extended the period for a month. So, for each of these community engagement periods, we had an online survey, um, but we also understand there are some limitations for folks having access to internet and then also access to electronic devices. So, we wanted to make sure we integrated paper surveys, interactive boards, we had, uh, both virtual livestreamed and recorded meetings as part of this, and we also had open houses, and again, each of those were, um, the online surveys and activities were open for about a month. So, in total, of all the surveys, online and paper, we had six hundred and ninety-two respondents take our survey. We had over six thousand three hundred and twenty-three individual answer selections and over three thousand four hundred and seventy-six written comments. So, we've gotten a lot of tremendous feedback from the residents, business owners, and other stakeholders from Garfield Heights, and it's really been a great process. So, as I said before, we also had interactive and information boards, kind of at these key hubs throughout the community. So, at the library, the recreation center, the civic center, or the city hall, um, you can see there in some of the pictures, we also put together yard signs, um, that we had throughout the community, folks can go up, scan the Q R code, it takes them right to our website, which is kind of, uh, where we post all of our draft documents, presentations, and anything like that. And it also links to the survey as well. So, overall, um, with our recommendations, we thought we would highlight just some, some, you know, really key and catalytic projects, um, as part of this process. There we go, knew I missed a slide. So, what we heard through all of that engagement, um, there's really kind of five big key takeaways that kind of keep coming up, um, from what folks have said. So, number one, safety. Overwhelmingly, um, you know, residents have really stressed the importance of improving overall safety, but also the perception of safety throughout the community, that's a really top priority. So, it's not only the physical presence of police or patrol or those sorts of things, but also the perception. So, how people view the safety of the community and how residents view the safety of the community, does it physically feel safe? Number two, housing. So, respondents, um, really stressed, um, the importance of homeownership, so they're, uh, the city has definitely taken advantage of, uh, you know, the funds that are available to, you know, remove blighted properties, um, or homes that have been abandoned, which is a great opportunity for infill housing, um, but then you also have a lot of folks coming in and turning, um, hot homes into rental properties, and there's some maintenance issues that could potentially pop up with those, and that's what residents are starting to take note of, um, with that particular comment. Um, but then also, they wanna help senior homeowners, you know, or there are different types of programs, partnerships, and incentives that can encourage, uh, and help seniors stay in their homes safely. Infrastructure, you'll kind of see this throughout a lot of the different, um, response, uh, comments. You know, residents definitely want new, um, they want new, um, things to see, parks, recreation, infrastructure, but they also wanna maintain what's there. That was really important to folks that we heard. So, they're excited about infrastructure projects, you know, the potential for the extension of Transportation Boulevard down to Rockside Road, um, was a great project, but also the potential for the Garfield Boulevard reconstruction and trail, that would ultimately connect the toll path on Warner Road to Garfield Reservation. So, there's a lot of really great projects in the works, and folks are excited. But we wanna ensure, um, residents really wanna make sure that current roadway maintenance is also a priority. So, they want the new, but we also wanna make sure we're maintaining what we have. Four, recreation, um, there's a lot of really great options in Garfield Heights, so there's a lot, uh, so the recreation center is a little dated, they wanna see new equipment. They definitely wanna see, again, kind of that existing theme, uh, existing parks and athletic fields, they wanna make sure they're well-maintained, um, before we start implementing new. But they also want us to prioritize new parks, um, especially neighborhoods south of, um, I four eighty. So, the neighborhoods south of I four eighty, there's actually real no, um, public parks that are accessible to the public. So, that was something we heard a lot, making recreation more easily accessible and available for the, uh, those folks was particularly important. And then lastly, five, uh, so zoning and code enforcement, um, even the residents were bringing this up, you know, emphasizing the importance of enforcing zoning and codified ordinances to really help support that higher quality of life. So, the city's zoning code, um, a lot of those regulations date back to the early sixties and seventies. So, it has been a long time since a number of those portions have been touched, updated, um, and so much has changed since then. So, it'll not only help, you know, get the type of development they want, it'll get the type of development and, you know, help have that certain look, that feel with design guidelines, and just bring it up to modern best practices. So, now into recommendations, they're really kind of lumped into two overall categories, we have community-wide and focus areas. So, community-wide, those that can be generally applied broadly to the entire city, and then we have our focus areas. These are targeted, um, recommendations that, you know, investments can be made. So, this is just kind of a smattering of all the different types of ideas, um, that we've talked through with the master plan. We have six overall topic areas, um, within the master plan, we have transportation networks and roadway infrastructure, environmental stewardship and stormwater management, community facilities, programming and recreation, economic development and workforce programs, zoning and community character, and then housing and neighborhood reinvestment. So, those are kind of our six core topics that a lot of this stuff has come in. You can see branding, signage, wayfinding was a big piece of this, integrating a lot of the greenways features, um, for trails, safe routes to school, green infrastructure, housing, all big pieces of this master plan, and all really important to residents and everything that we heard. Uh, one example that we're gonna highlight here is that map in the top left, so kind of identifying redevelopment opportunities. So, you can see kind of in the pink, those are commercially, uh, commercial opportunities, you know, sites that are generally greater than five acres or so. In the blue, purple, those are industrial sites, again, generally greater than five acres. But we've identified kind of these four big orange sites, um, as part of that map, and here they are kind of blown up. Kind of the biggest opportunities within the community, and we're gonna highlight number four, Turney Town. Hopefully, a lot of folks are probably familiar with Turney Town, kind of got that look and kind of got that feel of being in Garfield Heights, and folks really refer to this area as kind of downtown Garfield Heights. It's really in the middle of it all, it's in the middle of the community, has direct access, you know, to Garfield Boulevard with the potential for that trail, being a real economic driver, and there's also opportunity to connect into Garfield Reservation with all of the great improvements that are happening there. So, it really is kind of the heart of the community, um, if you think about Turney Town and redeveloping it. So, um, it's a little bit fuzzy, um, but this is generally Turney Town, how it sits today, something, uh, some of the comments we heard from folks as we talked to residents, the parking lot itself is really kind of like the wild, wild west. There's obviously highly underutilized parking, um, there's generally no clear direction on where to drive, where to park, where should you walk? So, there's a lot happening here and, and a lot of that, um, a lot of pavement, um, as well. So, no clear circulation pattern, but definitely a lot of opportunities. So, we outlined a couple different options, you know, they could start with small and slowly build up to potential complete redevelopment. So, we decided, um, to kind of give them kind of that, that end picture of what it could be. So, we're talking about bus transit lines, certainly, um, with the road there, Turney Road, it's wide enough to accommodate that. Um, and any sort of redevelopment that could happen at Turney Town could have that spillover effect to the other side of the road. Really encouraging that rehabilitation opportunities on the other side. But we're talking, uh, on Turney Town, definitely preserving some, um, surface parking, but also thinking about parking structure, how can we consolidate that parking kind of locally, centrally, and kind of keep it a little bit hidden, um, from those outer areas. Thinking about, you know, enhancing landscapes, thinking about different housing types and opportunity for townhomes, you know, mixed-use redevelopment, opportunities for outdoor entertaining, that was also really big to residents, having outdoor spaces where they can congregate, eat, talk, you know, talk about their day, whatever it might be. So, this was important for folks as well. And just one example within the document. So, shifting gears and talking more about focus areas, we had five overall focus areas. Number one there in the top corner, that's actually Ward One, that's East Hundred and Thirty-first Street. Number two there, it's a little hard to see, but that's Garfield Boulevard Three, uh, Turney Road north of I four eighty. Number four is Turney Road south of I four eighty, they're actually quite different, um, and then number five is the Marymount Campus area. And we're gonna highlight, um, East Hundred and Thirty-first Street for everyone. And we're going to highlight um, East Hundred and Thirty First Street for everyone. So each of those focus areas got not only a kind of a, an overall ideas map, they got a very detailed map. Um, starting to outline those various ideas um, within the document. So we pulled out some of those big ideas for folks here today. So number one, streetscapes. We definitely want to, you know, bring buildings up to the street, make it walkable, make it kind of that welcoming feeling. Again, that'll also play into that perception of safety, that feeling of safety, making it feel welcoming will help do that. B, housing redevelopment. There's some really great opportunities there for clustering some single families with our zone now, uh, single family sites, clustering them together for um, thinking about townhomes that'll really encourage that dense, compact, walkable development along East Hundred and Thirty First Street. C, infill housing. So you can, it might be a little hard to see on the screen, but all of those kind of opaque yellow shapes, those are all vacant, single-family lots. Um, and the vast majority of those were a result of the county's demolition program. So thinking about where can we put infill and also the zoning code, does it allow it? What does it look like? So I know we're also doing a lot of work in our own department, our own office, um, about infill housing as well. Uh, parks and green space, uh, thinking about access to already existing amenities, but enhancing them. There's opportunities for expansion to the metro parks. The metro parks are just to the west of here um, into the Garfield Reservation. So that's really important. And lastly, connections. So metro parks, access to other neighborhoods as well. Um, because uh, this neighborhood Ward One is largely cut off because of Broadway Avenue just to the south. So thinking about those diversity in housing types. Um, so we have an example here of that, this is a former school that is actually still there um, in that Ward One neighborhood. Um, it's where the letter D and B are, kind of over there on the right. So thinking about what that could look like, starting to integrate other housing types, again, improving the streetscape, decorative intersections, um, passive trails, streetscapes, park space, maybe a playground and pavilion space, street trees, really trying to bring again, that, that neighborhood feel, that character feel. And again, diversifying housing types, diversifying housing costs at different price points. And then obviously, design guidelines will also be important as well. So we're into implementation right now. As I said, we've started community engagement number three. We're going to have the public really start to weigh in on all these recommendations and they're going to help us prioritize all these various recommendations by whether it's a high priority for them, a medium priority for them, or a low priority for them. So that is actively going on. We've already had a bunch of people take our survey since opening it on Monday, so it'll be open for about a month. Um, in the meantime, we've outlined a number of projects in the implementation and document that are early wins and high priority. So we've outlined projects that are early wins because they're uh, potentially lower cost associated with them or they can be rela- uh, e- uh, easily implemented. Generally, they have shorter timelines or they can be paid with existing, um, you know, funds as they are right now. We also outline high priorities. So these are the projects that are integral to achieving that community vision. And they can really vary with their associated costs, timelines and partners. Um, but generally, they might have longer timelines, um, higher costs or there might be a really large collaborative effort to get something on the ground. So those are the types of things that are going into implementation, kind of in the background as that survey is open. And then lastly, we're going to assemble everything into a complete, comprehensive document um, for the city to kind of have one more look through and then hopefully take it to City Council for adoption, kind of into August, uh, end of August into September. So. That's really it. Um, in terms of the Garfield Heights master plan, the, the city has been a pleasure to work with. Um, and I can say that everyone is very, very excited to have county planning there um, to help kind of shape their vision and, and look ahead to the future. So. It's a good time to be in Garfield Heights.
Thanks, Rachel. Yeah, the engagement from the city standpoint has been, you know, tremendous. So they've been really at the table for all these discussions. I just want to give kudos to Rachel and the team. I mean, you can see the quality of the product that's coming out of this team. And I, you know, always, I always brag about how proud I am of them, but the graphics, the work, I mean, the engagement with the community, it takes a lot of time. But you can just, you know, just a sample of some of the things that are coming out of, of this team and it's, it's terrific. So.
Yeah, and if anyone's interested in looking at any of the results reports or the final document will be posted hopefully soon. You can just go to our website, countyplanning.us/garfieldhighs.
Thanks, Rachel. Any questions?
Just a, a comment and um, I think Garfield is pretty well aware of this, but when you were talking about the early wins, County Council has the CDSG program, a fifty thousand dollar grant um, that some of those signage and wayfinding things would be a perfect fit for. So.
All right, great.
If you can encourage them to apply for that, I think our next application goes out in October, November this year.
Yeah, I know the city really wants to undertake a much larger rebrand.
Yeah.
They just completely redid their website.
Yeah.
Um, kind of concurrently with the master plan and.
We've already funded similar projects like that before, so.
Awesome. Yeah. All right. Oh, yeah.
I just want to say excellent work. The graphics are really amazing. I am curious through the engagement process with the neighbor, City of Cleveland to the north, um, were there any thoughts about the connections? Particularly East Hundred and Thirty First Street I saw.
Yep.
The great streetscape work. Curious.
Yeah, definitely. We would love to have those trails continue north. I think one of the biggest opportunities though, Garfield Boulevard and tapping into the bike lanes um, there on Warner Road. They just kind of stop right there at the, the border between Garfield Heights and Cleveland. So it's really not that far as like, you know, maybe five hundred feet, you know, of either bike lanes or a trail extension to get folks into what would ultimately be the towpath trail from Cleveland. So it's really, really close. So I would say Warner Road is a really great connection opportunity. And definitely Ward One, East Hundred and Thirty First Street, another great opportunity as well.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yeah, I'm just curious. Um, I'd say the, the highlighted goals is probably something that near every first suburb that would uh, that happens. So I think that it's difficult to change perceptions of people, especially in safety.
Oh, yeah.
So that's a difficult one. But I'm curious with the Turney Town, is that property vacant? Is it under ownership of the city or is it?
No. Yeah, it would be seen private ownership right now. Um, in the document, we outlined several options. So if we wanted to start with maybe just streetscaping or maybe public art, we outline um, wall murals. Uh, some of those end buildings have very large blank walls. So redevelopment ultimately, I think, would be the end goal much further down the line. But I think smaller investments like reorganizing the parking, implementing green infrastructure, really making clear connections for folks from the sidewalk. Two front doors of businesses would be a great place to start. Redevelopment, you know, it's just again, that's kind of the end goal, I think, scenario much further down the line. And I think there's a lot that can happen to really improve it, um, but longer before then.
I, I just know it's really difficult, especially it's a retail corridor. And when they lock in these leases with some of these sellers, they have parking requirement. And so we're doing a complete rewrite of our code, but it's not until something's triggered in that code where we're going to be able to really realize some of those minimizing the parking requirements in, in certain retail areas. So it is, it's a long process.
Yeah, definitely. I think, I think parking is probably a hot topic in a lot of areas. Um, pu- places being overparked and having um, very large minimums. Um, when in fact, you don't need it. You, you saw on the Turney Town graphic, that's an aerial from Google that was probably taken in the middle of the day and there's like twelve cars in a, in a parking lot that would probably accommodate several hundred. So I think that in a lot of instances, uh, it's overparked. So Turney Town, Turney Town could fit anywhere. You've probably seen it in all of the communities, in the first suburbs especially. Um, so I think a, a much larger parking study would be, would be beneficial.
Great. Any other comments, questions? Rachel, great work. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Yes, so we'll move on to the executive director's report. A few key um, areas that I want to cover today, won't be uh, in too much detail, but um, just like to keep you updated with what's happening with the team and uh, the work that we are currently doing and then work that we will begin to do. So in terms of staff updates and job postings, we have uh, our newest planner, Maureen Riley is here with us today.
Hello.
Um, Maureen joined our team recently. Sorry, um, but we took her from the City of Cleveland Community Development. Um, so I'm more of reshuffling the deck. Um, and then I think last time we met, I did announce that Paul Triola had accepted our offer. Um, Paul is here full-time now. He was formerly our intern. So it's great to have them on staff and they've really just jumped right in and we're keeping them very busy. So thank you and welcome to both of you officially. Um, and then uh, one update on a staff resignation. Many of you know Robin Watkins Dunn. Uh, she's had a couple of different names um, in the past, but she unfortunately um, resigned recently due to some personal reasons. And so uh, she was here for twenty-three years. So it is a, you know, a long time employee that unfortunately is no longer with us. So uh, with that being said, we are looking to hire a GIS specialist. We just posted that position yesterday. Um, so we're posting it through APA, Ohio, Cleveland State. Um, there's a GIS users group, so um, much like we did with uh, our latest planning postings. But uh, we've asked everybody, if you know somebody, please share. I know Enterprise GIS is trying to find someone too, so um, you know, we know the hunt for talent continues. But uh, Paul has done a great job of jumping in and doing some GIS for us and really helping uh, lessen the burden on Dan. So we promised him it wouldn't be forever, but thank you, Paul, for jumping in and helping out. Um, okay, and then in terms of planning grants, if you remember last year, we put a pause on doing any new planning grants. I was new. We had a lot of projects, a lot of things that were well underway um, that we felt it was important to complete those before starting something new. Um, so last Friday, I sent out an email to planning directors, development directors, mayors and economic development directors. Um, most of you should have received it. Someone on your team received it. Maybe both of, both of that happened. So we sent that out requesting input. So we know we've been fielding a lot of one-off calls, looking for assistance and trying to figure out the best way to help communities. So we thought doing a survey and getting input from um, the communities on what their biggest planning needs would be really helpful in us shaping what our planning grants look like um, later this year. So we've asked for responses back um, by July twenty-ninth. We anticipate releasing planning grant applications in early September, uh, announcing those awards in Q-four this year and then getting under contract, bringing those back to this board uh, in Q-one, twenty-three. So although we're saying twenty-two, it's really, they're going to be starting um, in twenty-three, given the time it's going to take to get applications out and in. Um, but we're really excited. We, like I said, we've got a lot of projects that are nearing completion. So the timing is really great um, for our staff to then start looking at the applications that come in and evaluating those and prioritizing those and deciding um, what awards are, are given. So I'm, I'm very happy about that. So I'm glad that we're being able to follow that um, schedule. And I did, uh, if, if many of you, multiple people in the communities got the survey, we've asked that just one survey for per community is done. So if you and your planning director got it, get together and just give us one for the city. Um, the other thing that is underway, which I believe we've mentioned before, this is more of a county-wide initiative. We have um, a transit-oriented development zoning analysis that we're doing uh, in partnership with RTA. We've worked with City of Cleveland and your terrific staff on lessons learned for West Twenty-Fifth and others. Um, and really looking at not only thinking about transitory and development, but what zoning is in place in our communities to support transitory and development in the future. And so uh, we've had a lot of interest and a lot of excitement about doing this. It's something a lot of communities um, are trying to do. Some have already done it and do it very well. But how can we prepare communities to embrace more transitory and development, make more walkable, bikeable and transit friendly corridors? So um, there is initial focus right now on key transit corridors that have been identified with RTA and looking at some of their routes. So not all communities will be part of this phase one. Uh, the message did go out to those that are included, um, not yesterday, the day before. And so then they, those groups will be invited, if they haven't already been, to an August fourth kickoff meeting for that. Uh, we did notify communities yesterday that are not part of it. Um, just to let them know that this is out there and that we would be happy to share results with all communities once we um, continue this work. So I'm excited about the work. Um, it's been great having conversations with NOACA, City of Cleveland um, and RTA to figure out, you know, how do we best look at this? And it could be this whole ocean, but we're trying to start small and figuring out, you know, what do we know and what we need to know. We'll have conversations with developers. Um, Laura uh, on our team has been reaching out to multiple communities outside of the state of Ohio to see how they have addressed it and lessons learned from that. So it's been really great insight that we were excited to share with everybody. So um, that's a little bit of that on TOD. Um, and then kind of the Greenway Partners outreach. I mean, we, we frequently talked to you about uh, the Greenway Partners. We had a really great um, executive session a couple of weeks ago at Merwin's Wharf to really talk about what is the, what's on the plan, where are the critical gaps and how do we prioritize that? Um, I believe Mayor Galvez, you, you participated in a session with Elaine, talking about critical gaps and what we know about the trail uh, network. And again, it's one of those things that not a lot of areas or communities have a county-wide plan for trails. And so I would just say that the coordination has been tremendous between ODOT, NOACA, the cities, um, you know, and all the partners involved, the metro parks. So we're continuing that. What has been happening already is more of these informational sessions with communities. Like, did you know that this plan exists and did you know that this area in your community is identified as a critical gap? Um, and so that will continue. Um, I did share information with um, Councilwoman Simon and Councilwoman Conwell about this upcoming site visits that are being scheduled in August. Uh, it's something that I would like to make sure that all of County Council is aware of. So whether that's via email, Brendan and Joe maybe, or if it's something we provide a presentation. Because the elected officials' educational session started last year. We want to make sure County Council is well aware of these individual sessions that are taking place and these site visits so they can participate. Um, I know Councilwoman Baker participated in the Bay Village discussion. So just making sure that they're aware and involved so that um, they can help promote this as well. So um, there are dates set in August for these tours. As you can see, uh, various mayors are hosting those. And we've got several elected officials, state elected officials um, that are committing to attend those as well to see firsthand what these projects are. If you're interested, I will send additional information afterwards to the group. But Elaine Price is coordinating that registration and RS, RSVPs to make sure that they've got enough seats on buses for those tours. So excited to get them on the ground. It's different looking at a piece of paper, looking at something online. But actually, being able to do this in person um, is going to be really exciting. And um, I did want to say too, we've gotten, there's a lot of excitement around trails. Obviously, you guys know, um, we've had really good conversations with the National Park System, Cuyahoga Valley National Park System as well as metro parks. And um, there was really an encouragement to the group to start making sure um, to promote awareness of the Green, Cuyahoga Greenways. And I know Sean Terry from uh, Trust Republic Land posted something yesterday. I believe uh, in the county, you know, news for you, there was a, a mention of the Greenways Plan. And then um, ODOT in their recent newsletter is talking about the Greenways. So this is something that has been in existence for quite some time, but it's really getting a, kind of a life of its own. And I think we all learned from COVID that everyone wants to be outside and wants to have some recreational opportunities. So pretty exciting. Uh, and just some administrative updates. Uh, we are working to update and amend our personnel policies and procedures manual and bylaws. Um, Wes has been fantastic to work with. We have just realizing that there's a little bit of some uh, things that need to be updated and especially given the number of policies that we implemented last year. We want to make sure that our overall manual is up to date. Um, also looking at where uh, Cuyahoga County has updated their manual and sometimes our manual references those to make sure that they're all on the same page. So I know we've talked about it, Brendan, um, you know, and Jim and yourself to try and make sure that we're cohesive. Um, and things that have just been unclear when it came to board seats and alternates and some of those things that we really, it's time to just freshen some things up. So we will be working on that. Uh, once we have those documents in draft form, we'll bring them um, to you as the board and we'll eventually need approval of those new amended documents. So just kind of a heads up on that. Also, single-family zoning phase two. Um, if you remember, we talked a little bit about um, previous meeting that uh, the First Suburbs Consortium was going to assist two communities in doing um, additional analysis for their single-family zoning as part of the, the project. So uh, out of a hat, I believe, maybe truly or not figuratively, but there was a drawing to see which two communities will be part of that pilot. And Euclid and South Euclid were chosen, so uh, we will be contracting with them for that work. Um, and again, this was something I believe we mentioned last one. Individual contracts are twenty-five hundred dollars each, so we didn't need board approval because it's um, under five thousand for one contract. So that's another thing that we've asked legal to look at, kind of making sure we're following these ordinances um, and powers and duties with, um, as it comes to in-kind services and um, contracts. So um, those will be moving forward very quickly. Um, I believe beginning of August, Patrick and the team will be presenting at the First Suburbs Consortium meeting to give an update on where things have go, been going. But as you heard from Rachel, I mean, those infill housing lots and those opportunities exist in so many of our communities and really trying to prepare communities so they can respond to developers who may be interested and um, have some control over what goes in in terms of infill. So. Um, contract extensions and amendments. Mayor Prosec just signed one today. So we have several projects that are nearing completion, but just need a little bit longer to get them done and get them through uh, presentations to planning commissions and councils. So we've extended a few of those. Um, and then we also are looking, we've had a meeting with um, East Cleveland and Department of De- Development yesterday. Uh, we already have an existing contract with Department of Development. Those, uh, that contract has been extended. Those, uh, that contract has been extended. And, uh, we will be looking to change a little bit of the scope to provide additional services to East Cleveland. We're doing the land use strategy, um, strategy work right now. And we are, they're looking for assistance in some of what of a targeted, um, zoning analysis for, um, the western portion of their city, um, on Euclid Avenue and how it relates to pla- plans happening in Cleveland. And so rather than, at this point, we can't take out a full zoning code update. But we are going to swap out one of the scope items we had initially identified for the five-year plan for development because they've worked with Baldwin Wallace on that. So we'll be able to do the zoning analysis of this targeted area as part of that contract. And I think that is all I have.
Any questions for the executive director? They are doing a lot of work. I'm right around the corner from them and I see everybody busily going, coming and going. And so I know there is tremendous amount of work going on within the department. Thank you, Mary and team.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have anything under old business? New business? Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting. So moved seconded by, uh, Director Wong. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
Thank you. An efficient meeting for a summer meeting, so you can have ten minutes back.